Good evening and welcome to the February 7, 2012, meeting of the Glendale City Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Council members Manukin.
Here.
Njarian.
Here.
Montero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Freedman.
Here. Tonight's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Weaver.
Who is joining with me in our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, civil and political liberty.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation to be delivered by the Reverend Al Garcilazo of Glendale.
Let us pray. Dear God, we are grateful to be here tonight at the city council meeting and pray that you will guide our mayor and city council members as they deliberate and discuss the various issues facing our city. May each of us do our part in protecting and defending the civil and religious liberties that we enjoy. Now I pray that you will bless each of us present, bless our city, our state, our country, and just fill us with your spirit and grant us your peace. Amen.
Thank you. Can we hear your report, please?
Agenda for the February 7, 2012, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is postponed on Thursday, February 2, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next, under Presentation and Appointments, at 3:00 a.m. is Agenda Preview for the meetings of February 14, 2012.
Thank you, Ms. Beers.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, for February 14, we have no business agenda items for the Glendale Housing Authority, which commences at 3:00 p.m. For the Glendale City Council meeting to commence at 6:00 p.m., we have a number of consent items. Chief of Police, this is regarding the 2008 United States Department of Homeland Security State Homeland Security Grant Program and additional funding awarded to the city of Glendale in the amount of $50,000 for the procurement of interoperable portable radios. Director of Information Services and General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is a recommendation to acquire additional software licenses and software maintenance management to assist in the maintenance management of GWP Electric Division site-specific assets. Director of Public Works, this is the Adams Street and Chevy Chase Drive Rehab Project in connection with Spec. 3364. Under Adoption of Ordinances, we have an ordinance amending local election campaign regulations regarding voting on contracts and land use entitlements where contributions from a developer contractor or subcontractor have been received. We have a number of items under Action Items that evening. City Treasurer, this is the City Treasurer's Quarterly Investment Review as of December 31, 2011. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is an investigation of the EPA of chromium 6 contamination in groundwater San Fernando Valley area 2. This is a Superfund site. Director of Community Development, this is a status of zoning standards for hillside residential development in the ROS, residential open space zone, and R1R, which is a restricted residential zone. And Director of Community Development, this is the review of the View Protection Design Review Process. And lastly, the two items, Director of Community Development, potential initiation of a zoning code amendment related to additions to single-family homes with parking in non-conforming stature. And Director of Administrative Services, lastly, which is for Finance Fiscal Year 2011-2012, this is the second quarter financial update, and this is for the period ending December 31, 2011. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Very much. Next item, please.
Next item is City Council or Staff Comments.
Any comments from council?
Mr. Manukin?
Yes, we, I attended, and some of the other council members attended, Independent Cities Association event over the weekend, and it was geared towards realignment, and realignment is where the state of California releases all, some of their prisoners to the local jails and the amount of problems that cities and local governments will be facing in the coming future. I was, to be perfectly honest, I was not taking this issue very seriously because I didn't think anything was going to come of it, but after attending the seminar, I am very concerned, and I believe that our police department and our community have to work together to overcome this, this issue of realignment by the state. And I hope that if there are individuals out there, or there are communities, or there are homeowners associations who are also concerned, and you should be concerned, now is the time to form your neighborhood watches, now is the time to contact the police department and have them come out and talk about neighborhood watches and how you can start them and how you can organize them. I will be talking to them about that as well. So that is, that is a very serious issue. And the second is, I had the pleasure of installing the 2011-2012 Glendale homeowners coordinating council officers yesterday, and I would like to congratulate them. The President Todd Hunt, First Vice President Len Orsolis, Second Vice President Sherry Stubbs, Corresponding Secretary Bill Nichol, Recording Secretary Jennifer Pinkerton, and Treasurer Margaret Hammond. I would like to congratulate them all. I would like to thank the outgoing officers, Albert Hoffman, the past president, and Bob Getz was one of the outgoing officers, and I forget the third person's name. Richard Lee, that's right, Richard Lee as well. So I want to thank them for their service. I know the incoming officers have a lot of work ahead of them, and I wish them all the luck, and I ask them to give me a call if they need anything. I will be attending the meetings more often to keep abreast of the community needs, and I think it's a great organization, and I want to congratulate all of them. That is it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Njarian?
I also attended the Independent Cities Association seminar with several other council people, and the issue of realignment is, is quite daunting. The District Attorney, Steve Cooley, made a presentation and indicated that current crime rates are at all-time lows throughout the county, lowest rate seen in 60 years. The irony is that because of this realignment, which means the lawsuit at the state level ordering the state to release prisoners early on parole, will cause, in his opinion, the greatest spike in crime that we've seen in the last 60 years. So there are those out there who advocate reducing our police force and reducing our budget because crime is so low. What do we need the police for? And the thing that we have to be alert for is that there will be many, many bad people, although they're nonviolent, nonsexual, non-serious crimes that are being committed. These are still bad people that are going to be out in the community and that are going to be overwhelming the county probation officers that are tasked with seeking them. So this is why issues such as neighborhood watches and perhaps a closer look at how we monitor parolees at the city level would be well worth it. We're not getting any extra money. All the money that the state says they're distributing down the, the food chain stops at the county. They're not going to distribute anything to the states, to the cities, so we should be very alert on that. And perhaps that might be a good topic for a present, I know that Police Officer Chief DePampa has spoken at length about this, but as the picture becomes clearer, maybe if someone would support a discussion and a presentation as to what we could do as a city to combat this inevitable increase in crime. And you read about it every day, that the parolees are committing new crimes and burglaries and break-ins and so forth. We really have to watch out and have a coordinated city plan, so I would like to place that on the agenda if someone would support that.
Would support that.
And that's it.
Yeah, Mr. Montero.
I didn't attend the conference, but yeah, I also think we should talk about it, strategize. The more we get it out in the public, I think the better off we are. And as far as I know, the idea that some of the parolees are nonviolent, I believe that applies to their last crime, not necessarily the prior crimes. And then I want to congratulate the new board of the coordinating council. It was a very nice dinner last night, and they have a lot of work to do, so.
Weaver?
I was one of the council people that did not attend because my wife told me that she and I were going to babysit my son's daughter while they went on a vacation in Mexico. I know, so I canceled out of the trip, only to find they postponed their trip, and then when I tried to go, it was too late. I was going to fill our Njarian seat, but he went anyhow, so I stayed home, that's the whole thing. But I usually go to that one up there, it's usually dominated by police issues. A year ago, the same topic was brought up, and we were told to beware it's going to hit when they start releasing, and now you see the same topic again, because there is no solution. And they say most of the criminal element will go back to where they came from. So most of the criminal element that you'll see back here are ones that came from Glendale to begin with, and they'll go right back to their old trade because where are they going to get a job at this economy? So our crime statistics, while they're down this year, they're going to be up probably in the coming year. And I guess next year, retreat, they'll talk about the same thing again, what progress they've been able to make or not make during the course of this year, because we're really getting stuck with a bad situation, handed to us, no money to handle it, no prisons to put the people in, just dump it back on local government as they usually do, outside of the county. I'm glad my colleagues went and had a good sense of where we're going to be going on this issue. Thank you.
Thanks. I also attended the conference, and not to beat a dead horse, I'll just add that I am very concerned about realignment. And what really bothers me about this, besides these inmates being dumped onto facilities, local facilities that don't have the capacity to take these inmates, is the idea that now, with this new plan, that people that have been sentenced to time for crimes are not going to have to serve that time. And I think there's something fundamentally wrong about that. We tell people, you can commit a crime, but you no longer have to do the time, and that's what this does. It turns, and I didn't know this until this conference, but some of the felonies that have been defined as felonies forever are now being considered what they call super misdemeanors. So the people don't get the same sentencing, and they don't even get that felony strike on their record, as far as I understand. And they were talking about sentences that in the past might have been seven or eight years, and that people now might do six months in a local jail because the jails are so crowded. Certainly, it's a daunting problem for the state, but I don't think that not making people pay their debt to society is the answer, especially with nonrevocable parole and unsupervised parole, which a lot of these felons are going to be receiving. And when they say nonviolent crimes, even though there's maybe no bodily harm in something like grand larceny or identity theft or real estate fraud, people's lives can be ruined by these types of crimes. And I just think that for the state to throw up their hands and say, we'll just release all of these people, or we'll dump them on local government with absolutely no funding for them, I think is unconscionable. Okay. Yes.
And I know that it was mentioned during the agenda preview, but next week, what is on the agenda is the hillside ordinance and the view ordinance. And I want to thank the city manager for putting it on the agenda. It's about time. These are important issues that I dealt with when I was on council before 2007. It was very controversial. The economy was hot, and everyone was acquiring these substandard lots and building on them because, because they could sell the houses at a profit, even though they, they put a lot of money into building these hillside homes. We don't have that now, but this is the time to deal with this issue, with the, with the issue of CUP, with the issue of substandard lots, with the issue of slopes and all of that. And I want to emphasize to the community that next week, we're going to be, this item is going to be on the agenda, I don't know how it's going to turn out, but it will be on the agenda. In addition to this, the view ordinance, there hasn't been any direction given to staff regarding the view ordinance, but it will be on the agenda as well for discussion or direction. Those of you who are interested, please be here and express your, express your thoughts and, and your ideas about, about these items, because these items are important, and they will be, they will become an issue when, not if, but when the economy turns around, when the economy and the real estate market starts going up again to the degrees that they were before 2007. So now is the time to deal with it, and it's coming to council next week. Pay attention and be there and express your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, ma'am. We would ask just for a very quick opportunity to provide some information on the regional transportation plan. The RTP, I would ask our, bless you, our traffic engineer, Mr. Jono Bagdani, to come forward and provide what we believe are good thoughtful comments to the RTP, and if the council concurs with those comments, we can provide our input formally through the process this week. If not, if the council would like to amend or change, then we would bring it back to you on the 14th for formal consideration, as this is not on the agenda for tonight. It's really just information for the council, but again, we can make those changes, should you want to make them, at your next agenda on the 14th, understanding that they are due by the end of the day on 14th, by that night. So we would take that information, synthesize it, and then send it out to the folks at SCAG. But if you are good with what we have thus far, then we can move forward forthwith. So, Mr. Bagdani?
It's my understanding that these comments are based on council direction for the past couple of years, and that's where these comments were generated from.
Yes. Madam Members, members of the city council, the regional transportation plan that I handed you, a PowerPoint presentation that SCAG has been providing to, to the region, to the cities, and that's just a summary of that regional transportation plan for your information. And it is a long-range plan that is prepared and updated by SCAG every four years. SCAG has prepared a draft 2012-2035 Regional Transportation Plan, SLY, Sustainable Community Strategy, and Draft Program Environmental Impact Report that is in circulation currently. As I stated, I gave you a copy of that PowerPoint presentation that also was presented to the Roy Verdugo city members, that we are one of the members on, on that group. Basically, in the regional, regional transportation plan is important because the federal law requires a 20-year plan that implements recommended improvement, operation, and maintenance of transportation system. It's a plan that balances expected revenues and estimated costs, and it's a plan that meets air quality requirement. Also, the state law requires a strategy that meets California State Bill 375 requirements that addresses greenhouse gas emissions. The RTP that we're currently reviewing has major components that consist of the aviation, environmental mitigation, goods movement, growth forecast, high-speed rail, highway, and arterial, land use, non-motorized transportation, transit, transportation demand management, transportation finance, and transportation safety. We have been reviewing the RTP and the Program Environmental Impact Report that, as Mr. City Manager mentioned, that is due on February 14. We have also met with members of our neighboring cities, City of Burbank, La Cuenca de Frentrich, Pasadena, South Pasadena, to collaborate on the comments that we are preparing. And I handed out a one-sheet comment, this is the comments that are being prepared from the Roy Verdugo cities, that would be presented to the SCAG as part of a letter that will go out under the chairman of the Roy Verdugo. However, in addition to those comments, staff would like the city council to consider the following staff comments. One, under the transit and rail policies in the regional transportation plan that encourages local transit operators to expand and provide connections to planned rail services, regional transit services, as well as major employment centers. While we support such a policy for expansion of rail, metroling, high-speed rail, what the plan fails to identify is additional funding that will be necessary to fund such expansions by local agencies. As you all know, we just recently increased the B-line bus fares, but that's just adequate to deal with our, our current local system. As the regional services, BRTs, rapid transit rate increases, there is no funding mechanism for the local agencies to be able to connect to those additional transit services that are currently planned and will be planned in the future. We have also partnered with City of La Cuenca de Frentrich and Pasadena, and we've done studies, especially as it relates to the east-west corridor. The regional transportation plan does not necessarily address that specifically because we believe it's a very important service that needs to connect San Fernando Valley and San Gabriel Valley. We believe that these projects and connections between, that goes through City of Glendale and Burbank is very important for the regional and local transit mobility. We believe that projects such as this, which we call the missing links, because the gold line system that is currently in operation does not connect to the red line and the orange line services that is currently in operation, so we think that gap needs to be included in the regional transportation plan. It's been included in the metro's long-range plan and, and under one of the strategic corridors, but we like to emphasize that, and funding for that should be included in the regional transportation plan. Also, the extension of the orange line and the red line to Bob Hope Airport needs to be identified in the RTP, and the Glendale-Burbank light rail, which has been in our plans in the past, what city council has advocated, or improved service of the metroling if the light rail is not feasible, the metroling services to be expanded with higher frequency that could definitely serve City of Glendale and Burbank as well. The RTP also addresses high-speed rail and identifies one of the projects that is currently being planned, as council has heard about that. Again, what the plan lacks that we want to comment on is that it does not provide local transit services that can connect to the high-speed rail stations, whether it's in Glendale, whether it's in Burbank, or in San Fernando Valley. The connectivity is very, very important to make the high-speed rail success, so that needs to be identified under RTP. Another major component of any plan is the funding. The RTP finds two categories. The first category is called the core revenues, in the amount of $305 billion, that is included in the plan. These are funds that are technically committed. These are the gas tax funds, the local funds, TDA funds, Measure R funds, and federal formula funds that are used for transit. But then is also a second category of funding that are identified in the RTP, which is called the reasonable available revenues. These are in the amount of $226 billion that has been estimated. This category assumes sources of funding such as adjustments to the gas tax revenues, state and federal gas taxes, which we don't know if that will ever occur, because California does not get its fair share of gas tax revenues. Another controversial idea for this type of funding is vehicle mile users fees. That could be very controversial. We're not sure the regional or transportation agencies can endorse such a user fee, so that's been assumed. So technically, the RTP assumes that having the core revenues and the reasonable available funds together can essentially fund what's called the constrained list of project that is in the RTP. Our comment is that the SCAG should consider another alternative as part of the program EIR that only looks at the funding that is available, that you can count on, on a reasonable level, and develop alternatives for those projects that, that are available. If there's additional funding becomes available, then that would be something that can be incorporated as part of the plan. That is very important under the projects such as the 710 project, gap closure, so if you assume that those reasonable revenues will be available in the future, then you can fund those kinds of projects. But if the revenue is not available, I don't think they should be making such an assumption. Lastly, is the 710 gap closure or the extension, which is included under the highway and arterial section of the RTP. City of Glendale has opposed the gap closure or the 710 extension vigorously, and it is included in there, and we have provided comment in conjunction with City of La Cuenca de Frentrich and South Pasadena on that. City of Burbank and Pasadena did not participate in the comment on the, from the Roy Verdugo that included the 710 extension comments that we provided to city council. I'm not going to go through the details of it, but that's in your, I gave you a handout for your consideration, and we will continue to review the RTP and provide comments on it collectively within the city departments. However, as Mr. Ochoa mentioned, we'll be happy to entertain any comments the city council has that we can include in our present, in our letter to SCAG on the RTP and program EIR that was presented to us in the last month or so.
As the mayor quite correctly pointed out, these are all positions that the council has espoused in the past, and so we wanted to make sure that before we submit the letter, we present them back to council. If there is no further action or addition to them or change to them, then we would just move forward without action of the council, because again, they reflect those historical positions. Council does wish to make changes or amendments in a significant way, then we would hold the matter over until next week.
How much time do we have to review all this? This is under council comments, right?
Yes, sir.
Council staff comments?
Yes, sir.
It's not an action item or anything like that?
It is not. It's information.
I'd like to read and digest before comment.
If that's the council's pleasure, then we can bring it back next week if that, if that's what you desire.
Mr. Montero?
I think that's what we should do. I mean, the thing about the RTP is, so the dais know, but so the general public knows, I mean, this is, in a sense, also the conduit for federal and state funding, future federal and state funding, so every word matters, every sentence and paragraph, even though it is a planning document. So I agree with Mr. Weaver, let's at least look it over a little bit.
And I suggest that next time, staff brings this to us further in advance so that we have more chance to, to comment, since this is due, as you said, next week.
Sure, we'll do that.
Will we have time to interdue February 14?
Yes, sir.
Next meeting is February 14.
We would agendize this in such a way that we can incorporate your comments and still get the comments in.
We were intending, Madam Mayor, same manager, just we'll, we'll put together a staff letter to SCAG that would outline basically the comments that I stated and additional comments. There's areas that planning will comment on, the land use issues, and that would be basically what we would like to present to the council next week.
Now, these are not your comments. These are Roy Verdugo's comments. So there's a document, I assume, that are your comments that we don't have yet?
The Roy Verdugo comments is what we worked with staff from Roy Verdugo. Those comments were developed as part of our collaboration with staff. So these are, these are the comments that collectively will be presented from Roy Verdugo City.
I understand that, but so City of Glendale's not going to comment separately?
Yes, we are.
But we don't have those comments.
Those comments were basically what I paraphrased in my presentation.
I understand, but you haven't given us those comments.
No, no, that's what I will bring back.
Well, I, no, 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 you can't bring that back to us next week and have us look at it at the council meeting and give you comments. We need to see that in advance of the council meeting.
We will put that in your agenda packet. This is, and I'm sorry, this is my fault. In the past, we have not provided such comments to the council, because it was something that was established based on those historical positions that the councils had. Just by way of refreshing council recollection, we're bringing this, and we'll just put it as part of your packet in the next agenda. But it's, it's not Jono's fault, it's mine.
Well, just for instance, one of the questions I'm going to have will be, language including the RTP should clearly state that a full cost-benefit analysis shall be completed for each project contained in the RTP constrained plan. Is that what's done, or is this something we're asking for?
This is being asked for SCAG to consider as part of the RTP, the benefits.
By the Roy Verdugo.
Just to be clear, this is a Roy Verdugo letter, we're not voting on, a Roy Verdugo voted on this.
No, no, not that, but on that particular point, I'm just curious whether in fact, is that the normal way that it's done? Yeah, is that the normal proceeding? Do you have to do a cost-benefit analysis on everything in the constrained plan?
Do you do cost-benefit analysis on every project now?
They do not do that as part of the RTP, but it's being asked, and that's what will be incorporated. That was the Roy Verdugo plan, I just put all this together, and that's a draft I just received, so I'll put them all together in the form of letter that will include the Roy Verdugo comments, it will include the staff comments from Glendale. You'll see a complete package before you, you will review it on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Sure.
Will you review it maybe during the housing authority meeting, or does it?
That's kind of, that's what I'm thinking, is to do it earlier in the day.
Special meeting or something?
Yes, sir.
Short one.
Okay, thank you, Jono.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other staff comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thanks. Next item.
Next item is items following the routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council, or the audience requesting separate consideration, may do so by making requests before a motion is proposed.
Pull 5B.
Want to pull 5B?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll move the remaining of the consent calendar.
Okay.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Manukin.
Yes.
Njarian.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Freedman. Mayor Friedman?
Yes. Okay, 5B.
5B is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding proposed 6912 KV substation at Grandview Substation Site. One's resolution authorizing issuance of a request for pre-qualifications and subsequently obtaining proposals for engineering, procuring, and construction services.
We're starting this project, it's, we're issuing the, is it an RFP?
Yes.
And it's a $12 million, $12,500 estimated project. Has this project come in front of council? Has it been approved at this point, or?
The project, I believe, is part of the larger project on the west side of town with the GC3 campus that we're serving, but I'll ask Ramon to give some detail to it.
Yeah, back in, I'm listening today, back in May 2011, we brought this in front of council and asked for permission to hire a consultant to do the study.
That's the Pike Energy Solutions?
That's correct. And so this project has been going on for a while, and it's something that we're designing in order to support the business development that's happening in San Fernando.
And what is it exactly, what is, what is, what will it exactly do, this project? What are the improvements that we're seeking?
It will be very similar to what we did with the Glorieta substation. We're upgrading the substation so that we can support the growth in that area.
Okay, and what is Fund Number 553 and Organization Number 931?
That's the electric fund.
That's the electric fund?
That's correct.
Under financial fiscal impact, it says that this project was initially planned to be financed with bond funds. Were those bonds issued?
No.
Not yet at this point, no, sir.
Have they been authorized to be issued?
Yes, sir.
Then how can you move, if they are, if this project was initially planned to be financed with bond funds, and you haven't issued the funds or the bonds, why are you moving forward with the project without issuing the bonds? Do we have the funds to pay for this project? And then if we do have the funds, why issue bonds in the first place?
Well, the, the funding for GWP, no, we don't have at this point in time. Strategically, as we look back at the GC3 project, the idea of being able to provide this service, knowing that the load was going to come, that the need was going to be there, and that we would have to finance it, those considerations had been made, knowing that an RFP and a funding strategy would be implemented at a date certain. We are approaching those dates, and in order to keep alignment with the project schedule, we're looking to do the RFP now. Now, the council will certainly have the opportunity to decide on whether or not to issue bonds, whether or not to increase rates, whether or not to actually move forward in the project, but in order to keep the continuum flowing, we're asking to give authorization to do, to begin with the RFP process.
Okay, and will we, will the bonds be coming back to the council before we start the project?
Certainly.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move the item if there are no other comments.
Second.
Hey, roll call.
Council members Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Montero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes. Next item.
Six is oral communications. This is the three-minute event announcement portion, the full five-minute portion. We will revisit at the conclusion of all regularly agendized city business.
Thank you. My first card is Eric Olson, to be followed by Leon Meyer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Eric Olson. I'm a director of the Downtown Glendale Merchants Association. I'm here on behalf of the DGMA and our partners, Glendale Adventist Hospital Stroke Center, to speak about the Downtown Dash. This will be the fifth annual Downtown Dash on March 11th. That's the first day of daylight savings time. Over the years, we have raised hundreds of thousands of dollars for stroke treatment, education, and prevention, all here in Glendale. I've brought you all gift bags that include application forms and last year's T-shirts, or if you prefer to sign up online, downtownglendale, glendaledowntowndash.com. Once again, we have the pre-race training, which, if you're a little bit out of shape, is an excellent warm-up for the race, every Sunday morning, presented by All About You at 8:00 at the chess park. I will be running in the race. This is good news for all the other racers, because they will be faster than me, and you'll be able to point to an achievement. At the end, we will all get finisher medals. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We'll see you there.
And these, and these bags were provided by you, I suppose?
Yes. Yes, these are the gift bags that.
Thank you very much. There's just a T-shirt in here. I just want to emphasize that the value is less than $50, right? Just checking.
Trust me, you can, you can sign up for the race, and part of the benefits you get is a T-shirt.
Okay, when was the race again?
It's March 11th. It's the Sunday of daylight savings time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Leon Meyer, and then my last card is Al Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor Friedman, members of the council, staff. My name is Leon Meyer. I'm here for the Friends at the Library and the Glendale Library. We have two fine events for February. February 16th, we're going to have Denise Hamilton. Now Denise Hamilton is one of our own. She lives with her family here in Glendale, her husband and two children. They've been here for years, and she has a national reputation as a murder mystery writer, and she has the background. She was a Fulbright Scholar. She went to Bosnia and Kosovo during the war there. She came back and did work with the LA Times, where she was an international reporter and a local reporter, and she achieved many awards in that respect. And then following her work with the LA Times, she became a mystery writer. Coast to coast, she's been famous, she's won awards, and her latest mystery is Damage Control. Now Damage Control is a novel about a lady who, as a teenager, was, had a great friend who sent her down the river, so to speak, violated her friendship, and that broke the lady's heart. She went on to become a very important public relations crisis management individual, and she, at some point, became involved when the father of her former girlfriend, who was a big figure, powerful political figure, wealthy individual, right in the middle of politics, he was involved with the charge of committing a monstrous murder. There's your ingredients for a great murder mystery, and Denise is the one who can do it. Now Denise, as I told you, has been in Glendale for a long time. She's been a friend at the library, not an FOL friend, but she's been a friend at the library. For the One Book One Glendale series, she was the star in 2010. And then in 2011, she also helped out with the panel for the 2011 One Book One Glendale. She's also done work with other groups. She's been to Kiwanis, she's been to all the local places, and she's been a friend of Glendale. Now quickly, on the, and that's 7:00, parking's validated at the exchange. Real quickly, on the 22nd, Stephen Ross, Hollywood Left and Right, how movie stars shared, not shares, shaped American politics. And that's a real story in itself. Stephen Ross is a USC history professor. He's written books about the movie industry. He's been a Pulitzer Prize finalist, and his book will talk you, tell you all about Louis B. Mailer, Charlie Chaplin, Edward Robinson, George Murphy, Ronald Reagan, Harry Belafonte, Jane Fonda, Charlton Heston, Warren Beatty, and Arnold Schwarzenegger. What an array of stars who influenced American politics and the stories behind what they did. 7:00 on the 22nd. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Al Hoffman's my last card.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, council members and staff. First of all, I'd like to thank all the council members, the city manager who came to our installation dinner last night. We really did appreciate it. And also Captain Carl Provoladis came, and he spoke to us, and also Sergeant, Sergeant Tom Lorenz. And particularly, I want to thank Mayor Friedman for giving, presenting all the officers with this really great achievement award for us, and it's the first time we've ever gotten one from the City of Glendale, so it's really appreciated very much. One of the things Carl, Captain Provoladis spoke to us about was that realignment issue, and we had a meeting last year in the community room about that. Chief DePampa had all his people there. We had more police officer there than we did members, and this has been a frustrating thing. The people, the homeowners and residents, don't seem to get the gravity of what's coming down with this early release of prisoners, and we could really use your help in promoting things to try to get things out. We need to maybe get more articles in the news press, something to alert the people. It's really difficult. We did have, I got a request from a, through Officer Josh Luna. He has a new HOA they want to form up in Brockmont. I'm not sure where that is. It's somewhere between the northwest and Royal Canyon folks. We're not sure where the boundaries are, and I've talked to Hassan about, we got to redo our whole map of where all the HOAs are. They want to form HOA and hire a private security patrol, and.
Mr. Hoffman, I'm sorry, but this has to be a community announcement.
Oh, yeah, well, it would be helping out. I've talked to Chief DePampa about it. Having security patrols that homeowners would pay for would help out the police department in patrolling, and they want to set up a two-way communication for that. So it's related to that whole realignment issue, which is a real, going to be a tough thing for us to challenge, and as Councilman Manukian said, all the hillside things that we're going to be working on. So our new president, Todd Hunt, is going to need a lot of help and get things going. So thank you again, and we'll keep in touch.
Thank you. That's my last card. Next item, please.
Next item, action items. 8A is City Attorney regarding update on campaign finance ordinance and cleanup amendments to GMC Chapter 1.10. At 8A1 is an ordinance for introduction. At 8A2 is a motion providing direction to staff.
Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. The item before you is a cleanup ordinance to Ordinance Number 5744, which addressed the issue of campaign contributions from applicants for entitlement, contractors and subcontractors, and their related persons. The cleanup ordinance mainly is cleaning up some of the language to make it consistent in places where it's inconsistent, but there are, there are two, what I'll call somewhat or semi-substantive changes, but do, will have an impact as far as how it's implemented by staff. The first would be a requirement, would be a change to, change the threshold level for a city contract from $25,000 to $50,000. And the reason that we're recommending that, as we noted in the report, is mainly because the $50,000 threshold is what is, what triggers council review of contract to come to council. And what's happening is when we have contracts that are $25,000, they're sort of in this limbo, do we, do we, not acknowledge them, but do we note them, and do we start tracking the information from them or not, when indeed those, those contracts are not coming to you for review? And since the purpose of the ordinance is to address any perception that there's some sort of link between contributions and campaign, and contract approval, it's easier and more consistent to just have the threshold to be $50,000. The second substantive change would address the type of contract. Right now, the threshold is $25,000, and if it's changed, it'll be $50,000 for a contract that meets that $50,000 threshold in a fiscal year. And again, for tracking purposes, for monitoring purposes, it's proven difficult to say, okay, this contract, which was approved in January, is going to, is going to provide the contractor with $50,000 in a fiscal year, when it may go over a fiscal year or a couple of fiscal years. So it's easier just to have that particular threshold met if you have, have it applicable to any, any city contract. So those are the two substantive changes we were suggesting that we include with this cleanup legislation. I'm happy to answer any questions. I also included a motion in case council wants to provide any further direction or ask that I investigate any further changes to the ordinance as it is applied right now.
Okay, are there any questions from council? Mr. Najarian?
Just so I'm clear, the, so then you won't be looking at when the, assuming we raise the limit to $50,000, you won't be looking at when the funds are received by the contractor?
Right.
Whether it's in one fiscal year or it spills over into the next, you'll just be looking at the amount of the contract, and that would trigger the scrutiny.
That's correct. Any active contract over $50,000, essentially, and it's easier. It obviously provides more transparency to the council and to members of the public as far as what, what's being looked at and which contributions are, are being reported on the staff reports.
Do we have any open-ended contracts where the dollar amount isn't specified, but it's on a, or work performed type of?
We, no, we might, but generally, our practice is, because it makes more sense is to have a dollar threshold in the contract, and we come back. We've had some, and that's another example, we have some contracts that might have, we've had open for 10 years, and we've amended them a couple times a year, and so it makes sense to just have that contract reported on the, on the staff report, have all the campaign contribution information listed on the report.
Any other questions? I have a.
Yeah, well, why change from 25 to 50? It seems you've done it to me. If it doesn't come to the council, and the $50,000 limit doesn't trigger, it triggers it coming to the council, then why change it? Why go through this?
Council.
Really doesn't, it's not really going to make any difference whether the limit is set as 25 or 50.
Councilman Manukian, again, we've, it's been, it's difficult, because the staff is the one that has to review the contracts and see whether or not campaign contribution limits are, or, excuse me, the campaign contribution ordinance is triggered. And, you know, all I can tell you is that we've had some just monitoring issues, is there might be, for example, a contract that.
For the limit itself, or for?
Yeah. Well, you might have a contract, for example, that started off as less than $50,000, or less than $25,000, goes over the $25,000, maybe comes to council for some reason or another. Maybe it was adopted, the contract itself was approved before the campaign finance ordinance took effect, and so it's not clear to us, do we take that to, do we include the campaign contribution information in the report for that or not? If you have it $50,000, which is consistent with what, with what are the council's contract authority is, it's just easier for consistency's sake.
I have one card, and I'm Mike Mohill, and I'm going to just remind the speaker to please limit his comments only to this particular ordinance, which is cleanup language, not to the entire campaign ordinance, which was already adopted.
Mayor Friedman, my name is Mike Mohill, longtime resident of Glendale. This ordinance, action item is called the Update on Campaign Finance. I like to call it Redemption by the City Council of Glendale. Had we followed the rules of the California Fair Political Practice Commission, these new rules would not have to be enacted by the city council. And why did this all happen? Because in the year 2009, council members Quintero, Friedman, and Mr. Najarian took over 100, well, not including Mr. Giuseppe in this case, over $100,000 in campaign contributions from the subcontractors of ADI, and now we're trying to make up for it. We're also talking about Mr. Weaver, 2009, a $9,000 fine for campaign violations. Had we followed the rules of the California Fair Political Practice Commission, these, this meeting would not be held tonight. What I find very disturbing also, Madam Mayor.
What does this have to do with?
Can you limit your comments, please, to what we're actually discussing?
We are talking about the reason for campaign finance, because of, of council people not following the rules of the Fair Political Practice Commission.
That is on the agenda, Mr. Mohill.
Wait, Mr. Garcia, is this, is this?
It's 25 to 50. Yes or no?
That's just one item, 25 to 50.
Excuse me, I'm going to defer to the city attorney's opinion.
Madam Mayor, the limit, the purpose of this agenda item is to, to address some minor changes to the ordinance, substantive changes, but minor. We're not discussing the overall, the overall import or reason for the ordinance is not part of this agenda item, and it's not being recommended that any of the campaign contribution limits or any of that nature be amended. So it is within your discretion to ask the speaker to direct.
If you could please direct your comments to this, to what's being discussed. You're welcome. Your oral communications to address for us.
I am talking about, in summary and background, it talks about in this paper, prohibit contractors under city contracts for making campaign contributions. I'm talking about this in my discussion right now. Mayor Friedman, in 2009, your campaign manager was Elaine Wilkinson. She was former planning director for the City of Glendale, and in January 2009, her husband. And in January 2009, her husband, Bill Wilkinson, gave you $1,000 in campaign contribution under URS Corporation.
Mr. Mohill, please, if you can discuss this during-
And then in May, you went ahead and approved that contract for over $300,000.
Officer, could you remove him? You're welcome to discuss that during oral communications, but this is only about-
This is why we have, if you had followed the campaign contributions-
Hold on a second, if I may, Madam Mayor. Mr. Mohill, you're gonna be free to come up and speak during oral communications on this subject. This matter is pretty limited. Thank you.
Okay, and just to bring it back, to your knowledge, were any FPPC rules violated during the 2009 election cycle, as Mr. Mohill alleged?
I would, I would say no. In fact, the whole purpose of the ordinance is to address what is an area that's left unregulated by FPPC regulations, and the council acting under its authority enacted additional regulations to provide additional transparency to our campaign finance process.
Okay, thank you. That's the only-
Madam Mayor and council, allow me to add that, and commend the city attorney who's put in a lot of time and worked into this and cleaning this up. You know, when we did, when we introduced these campaign finance regulations, it was groundbreaking for the city of Glendale. We've made tremendous leaps ahead in what we had before. In no way will your decision this evening dilute the intent of the original ordinance that was passed. If anything, it streamlines everything and makes it simpler for staff to handle.
Thank you.
I'll be glad to introduce the ordinance.
Okay. Your ordinance has been introduced.
And then I guess we're making two's out.
Has there been any direction?
No.
Any additional comments?
Well, I just have a question. As I'm thinking about the type of contracts that somehow grow, one that comes to mind are attorneys, where we hire them for a particular case.
Right.
And oftentimes, you come back and ask for another sum of money. So at what point, at what point would the prohibition on voting for that, let's say the original contract is, say it's 40,000, and we adopt the 50,000 at this point, and the original contract is for 40,000? Someone from that firm has made a contribution to any particular council member. They come back, the case has been extended, it's become more complicated, they ask for another 50,000, which would cross that threshold of the 50,000. At what point then, so would that council person who received the contribution and lawfully voted up to a 40,000 contract now be precluded from the next step of that?
Yeah, because Councilman Jaren, yes, because the, there's two requirements. One, that it'd be a council, that contract that requires council approval, and that two, it meet the threshold, whether it's 25,000 or 50,000. So in the first instance, it wouldn't. Our practice on the attorney contracts is going to be to try to bring that information to you as early as possible, because there are also times with respect to our attorney contracts, especially as it relates to litigation, we will amend the fee cap administratively sometimes with your authority. So the answer to your specific question is yes. The initial, if the contract, if the ordinance is amended to make the threshold 50,000, any contract that's less than 50,000 that comes, that happens to come to you, and that's usually what happens, is that's usually not the case. Most contracts get approved by the city manager's office. I think the attorney contracts are probably the one exception, only because the charter requires that we have those approved by you. Most of the other contracts, they're not gonna come to you, and that's why we want to make them consistent, so it's a lot easier to administer.
And the important thing in this, and from day one, is that we didn't want to create traps for anyone on council, but that we are informed of that-
Right.
-early on, so that we can properly recuse ourselves from any discussions. So as long as, being the enforcement arm of this, as long as your office and Mr. Kosakin's office feel comfortable, they have a handle on that, I'm happy with that.
Okay, and I'm assuming that that's the case, Mr. City Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments from staff? Okay, the ordinance has been introduced. Next item, please.
Item 8B is Director of Information Services and City Clerk regarding online services and implementation of FPPC Campaign Contribution Disclosure Form 460 system. He wants a motion authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with West Coast Online Information Systems, Inc., DBA net file, for five years in an annual amount of $15,000 for a total not to exceed amount of $75,000, and option to renew for an additional five years for a total not to exceed amount of $87,028.19. He too has a resolution appropriating $15,000 to provide funds for the first year of the agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Fraga?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, Ed Fraga, Information Services Director.
If you'll allow me, is it pertinent to read the next item, since these are to be considered, or should we take them separately?
I think it should be read as well, because they're-
If you want to discuss them both altogether, then it should be-
Ed, would that be better, for the purpose of the workflow and the presentation? Should I read it? I can read it. Next item is related. It's HC City Clerk and Director of Information Services regarding online services and implementation of disclosure docs, e-disclosure software specifically designed for FPPC Form 700 management. C1 is motion authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with South Tech, Inc., for three years in an annual amount of $14,186.04 for a total not to exceed amount of $42,558.12, and option to renew for an additional three years for a total not to exceed amount of C2 is a resolution appropriating $14,186.04 to provide funds for the first year of the agreement.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fraga?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Ed Fraga, Information Services Director. You may recall, council may recall, that back in August, when the ordinance was initially adopted, we provided the council with a discussion and an outline of how we would implement the ordinance. That involved three components. First of all, a system that would enable council members or any elected official within the city of Glendale to post their campaign contributions, and that would be made public. And a second component is a reporting system by the city for contracts, and now with this amendment of 50,000 or more, all active contracts. And finally, a portion in which the city would report any entitlements, that's permits and licenses. The overall objective of this approach is to provide the council with a couple of mechanisms that, first of all, allows them to be completely transparent, and when I say council members, I mean elected officials, complete and transparent to the public, at the same time being provided by staff with the relevant information about what actions have been taken in the past by council, so that there, hopefully, then is no conflict. So that's what this slide is showing us on the, this is all relative to the first agenda item, which is the Form 460 of the Fair Political Practices Commission. In the center, you see the elected official. And to the left of that elected official is the Form 460 system that we are considering in the item B. And above, you see the process by which staff will report for contracts, and below, you see the process by which staff will report to you regarding entitlements. We don't probably need to go through all that detail, but that gives you the idea behind the Form 460. While we were at that, we thought that the city has had, City Clerk's office has had for many years, the requirement of, since 1974, to report conflict of interest, which is known by the same commission as the Form 700. And that conflict of interest has been a manual process in the city. There are about 2,000 employees in the city, about a quarter of those people are required to report that. And in addition, there are people who are boards and commissions, as well as council members, that must report. And that being a manual process, we looked at trying to make that an automated process, try to make it more accurate, and to integrate it in with the records we already keep with regard to employees and what positions they're in. The idea being that we will tighten that up, so that if, in fact, a person is put into a new job, they now get automatically that Form 700 requirement. In addition to that, we're doing this system to make it easier for the people who must report. Rather than report manually, they will be able to go online, look at what they reported last year, make the modifications, submit it, much, much simpler, much easier, faster, more efficient for everyone involved. So those are the two items that we have before the council.
Questions?
Yes. You said that this will make it easier for elected officials to be transparent, and are you saying we're not transparent currently?
No, 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 sir.
I just wanted to clarify that. Second, it's basically in, it's not a fill-in form for 460 that we're acquiring for $15,000 a year?
No, it's-
Because that is available already.
Right, no, this is an actual application. And I should mention that neither of these would be housed in the city. We would, the vendor is providing this as a service, so that-
So it's a cloud-based service?
Yes.
And what is, I don't understand, what is the benefit as it relates from the 460 to the contractors that staff is gonna be keeping track of in terms of contributions, campaign contributions, or whatever?
Yes.
Dealing with the finances. I just didn't see you making the connection between the money that we're spending, $30,000 a year, and how is that gonna benefit council members and elected officials to know that this individual has made a contribution and he's got a contract, or she has a contract? Where's that connection?
It's not a direct connection. It's actually the elected official is that connection.
Okay. So what is it facilitating by, are we purchasing a cloud-based 460 fill-in form for $15,000 a year for the next 10 years?
Yes, it is a, it is a cloud-based 460 form for, for campaign contributions.
Well, that's my contention, that already exists, if I-
And Ed, this system, inputting the data online and having this, the information is put in to the program, and then the form completed gets spit out. As CPA, I would liken it to the electronic programs, they're out there for taxes.
Yes.
The advantage of this is that it will also generate spreadsheet, Excel data list of all your contributions, which we can then merge with whatever other programs we have to be able to track who's made these contributions. Currently, the only way to do that with the system that we have is in the-
Or for the staff.
For the staff.
You will be able to-
For every, and for all the 460s that we have right now, currently, the best way to be able to track that is someone has to manually input, yes, the information.
They're all PDF files, you can't really, you can transfer them, there are softwares that you can transfer, but it's too much at this point.
Yes.
So by inputting the data by candidates and elected officials in the system, you will have access to that data easier, not easier, you will have access to that data without reinputting it, and cross-checking it with the vendors, basically, without reinputting all the data.
Yes, that is the goal.
Okay, all right. That's the connection I want.
City Clerk would notice that, of course, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nigarian?
The, I've been doing this for a couple of years with the county. LA County has a system like this. Is there a reason, maybe we're not gonna use their system, or have their system made available to us without having to reinvent the wheel?
Actually, the Form 700 program that we're looking is the same one that the county uses for their statements of economic interest. It is the exact same one that the county of Los Angeles uses, county of Ventura, city of Monrovia, along with a number of, I mean, there is a client list on the website of the vendor. And both have worked with the FPPC and are functional programs.
And this, we might point out that the 460 one that we're, we've selected is the only one that's been certified by the Secretary of State.
By, I'm sorry, by who?
By the Secretary of State.
Okay.
Other questions at this point?
Yes. Why, why a five-year contract with a five-year renewal? Why, why not an annual contract? What if you find a better program next year that works better with the same data? You're stuck with this program.
That's possible.
10 years.
It's, it's a matter of, you know, getting this problem solved and not having to readdress it for a while, because there are many, many, many contracts.
It'll take some time to train everyone on it, both the staff, in order to be able to process it, as well as the end users, such as elected officials and the more than 500, 600 employees that currently file that.
Is that many employees will have access to the program?
Yes.
The 700, yes.
Yes, Form 700. Retraining them on a new program after just a year or two years may be cumbersome. We'd like to try these out for that period of time. We think that would be sufficient.
The additional renewal is at our option?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Weaver?
My CPA already uses a 460 from the state. Will they continue to use it?
Yes. I would have to know your treasurer's actual program that he was using, but a lot of these programs are very similar. This is a very straightforward-
Yeah, you talked about the Excel spreadsheet. Would the one that my CPA is using probably not be able to do what yours does?
I would have to know, again, specifically, the program that he's using, but we'd be happy to speak to him.
And if it went to yours, would he have to access yours and use it to report rather than the one he's been using for these years?
You'll save money, Dave.
I know.
You won't have to buy-
I just asked the question.
...the program.
There's, there's a lot of different programs, not a lot of different programs, actually, this is a very niche market, but there are programs out there that all do the same thing. And again, if I can liken it to the TurboTax or the tax filings, it's all the same form. There may be different ways of presenting it on the plate, but it all achieves the same goal at that. So it'd be inputting name-
Different levels of user permission.
Thank you.
Okay, I have one card. Mike Mohill. And since we've taken the two items together, Mr. Mohill, I know you have two cards in, but it's only gonna be one opportunity to speak on the two items. And I'll remind you again, this is only about the computer program that we're purchasing to implement the ordinance, not about any ordinance itself.
Thank you, Mayor Friedman, council members, viewing audience. My name is Mike Mohill. My first question is, why spend $15,000 or $40,000 for this? Is Glendale such a large city that we need to be sophisticated in spending money on computer science? We're not Oakland, city of Oakland, Washington, or the New York City, Boston, we're a small little town, not even 200,000, I understand now. Why are we spending this kind of money? That's the first question. Second question is this. If a candidate deliberately lies on his 460 form and then votes on a project the month after that person's been elected to office, would this sophisticated system found out who this person was who was lying to the public? That's what I like to know. Because, Madam Mayor, your campaign manager, Elaine Wilkinson's husband, Bill, contributed $1,000 in January-
Mr. Mohill, please.
And then he approved, you approved the-
You can discuss this during oral communications. This is about computer-
This is part of the reason, I wanna know, will this, will we spending all this money, will it prevent council people who want to be dishonest? Will this prevent dishonesty within the council, the candidates who want to run? I ran for office. I'm proud of what the people who received my, I received money from them. I had nothing to hide. I didn't receive $16,000 from the subcontractors of ADI or Mr. Trump.
Officer, can you please remove Mr. Mohill?
Okay, the truth will set you free, Mr.-
You don't get it, do you, Mr. Mohill?
Madam Mayor, the software that's being proposed is merely a tool used by City Clerk's office, City Attorney's office, to expedite the process for folks that are filing either as candidates or who have been identified as Form 700 filers. At the end of the day, it's simply a tool. You know, using technology is really, the march forward is not going to be reversed. The more we can do that's web-based and cloud-based, is, that's the trend you're gonna continue to see.
You, any other comments or questions?
No, I'd like to move 8B, 1 and 2.
Second.
We have a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Manukian?
Can we move them both together? The motion and the resolution?
And C1 and 2?
Okay, yes.
Have they both been moved?
Wait, wait, wait.
No, just the first, just 8B, 1 and 2.
Yes, you can, I already asked.
Yes, okay. Councilmembers Manukian?
Yes.
Nigarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes.
Move 8, C1 and 2.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Manukian?
Yes.
Nigarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item is the return to oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Speaker is allowed five minutes. Council make question or response to speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City Manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay, thank you. My first card is Patrick Massey, to be followed by Margaret Hammond. My first card is Patrick Massey, to be followed by Margaret Hammond.
Uh, Mayor Friedman and members of city council, my name is Patrick Massey. Uh, tonight I will continue with questions four, five, and six. Uh, Mr. Garcia, if you recall, I did pose the question, uh, is a permit required for fixing roof leaks by installing shingles and tar about a month and a half ago? And, uh, according to the city's permit department, no, but according to Neighborhood Services, yes. Again, this inconsistency in these departments, which I found out last week, somebody corrected me, they're both under, uh, Mr. Hassan Haganey's Planning Department, is kind of worrisome because when you call the permit department, they give you, they give you one answer and Neighborhood Services gives you another answer. There has to be a rule somewhere. I have gone through our website, City of Glendale's website, and I have searched to see any statements concerning roofing. There are over a thousand documents of CPUC cases there that you can review if you have time, going through every project that the city has seen that had some kind of a roofing element to it, but I have not found any document that specifically states what Neighborhood Services is telling us versus what the permits department is telling us. That's question number four. Question number five, could you define the difference between rer roofing and fixing leaks? That's a question. I have to leave that to you, Mr. Garcia, because fixing leaks means fixing something that needs to be done by covering shingles with tar and with new shingles. Taking off shingles and actually taking off the plywood and putting a new plywood, that's rer roofing, but not covering leaks with tar and with shingles. But again, each department has their own definition. Are city employees allowed to campaign on local issues during work hours? Are they? Well, let's go back to November 15th of 2011. See, Mr. Engel was supposed to talk about the new city codes in front of about 50 to 60 realtors that day, but he chose to instead talk about rent control and how rent control was the silent event evil giant in the city. He went on to say some interesting stuff about his own biases that he has on certain issues, and I'm going to read some of the codes that he basically stated to some of the members there. Remember, close to 75, 70% of the city is now renting. This is a large population that can wake up one day and change a few council members and ask for rent control. We have to be careful. Direct code from Mr. Sam Engel. We are happy that Scott Ochoa is our new city manager. He's a younger version of James Starbird. God help us if that's the case. The status quo will remain for at least two years. There will be no changes. Direct code from a Sam Engel. He's already setting policy. He is already sure that the status quo will remain for two years. You just don't put slider windows on your house. Hanging windows are better. This man is also biased against those individuals that have decided to put sliding windows. You just don't put aluminum or vinyl windows on a million-dollar house. That's why I put hanging wood windows on my house. Direct code from Mr. Engel. Remember, we are bureaucrats. We love process. Direct code from Mr. Engel. We love complicating things. Direct code from Mr. Engel. I agree that permitting process is a mess, but that, but that's the way it is. Now, imagine, this man is invited to talk about the new rules of permit, of, uh, permitting in the city. And in fact, it says, "City of Glendale Code Compliance and Recent Changes." That's the topic for this talk, but instead, for an hour, he decides to rant against rent control, to rant against vinyl windows. That was the whole thing. We never heard a single thing about the new code changes. Ladies and gentlemen, I am against rent control. My family has numerous investment properties. We are not for rent control, but as an altruistic individual, I'm appearing in front of you to say things like this should not go on. If it ever comes to a vote, I'll be the first one in line to vote against it, but it is absolutely unfair for individuals who are actually for rent control to have a city employee go and actually campaign against it. That concludes those six questions that I posed about a month and a half ago, Mr. Garcia. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Margaret Hammond?
I'm sorry, where was, where was that, uh, where, what organization was he speaking to?
He was speaking to a bunch of realtors. I cannot name that organization, but I will send you the information.
Thank you very much.
More than 60 people present.
Thank you.
Margaret Hammond, to be followed by Charlie Hooker.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond and a longtime resident of, ancient resident, should I say at times, um, of Glendale. First off, uh, my usual, uh, thing of asking for people to call for bulky item pickups and not leave junk lying along the curbs, beds and couches and all kinds of things. The number being 818-548-3916, I think, anyway. Um, and then the second thing I want to talk about are the trees. We lost a lot of trees in Glendale. We talk about it all the time, uh, amongst ourselves, and we're concerned, as I said, because it's, we hate to lose our trees, being a tree city for many, many years. And Glendale Beautiful happens to be, uh, one of the venues where you can purchase trees in honor of a friend, a man, a family member or whatever. I've done it several times, my mother, my father, and other friends. Um, and recently, somebody, Pauline Richardson, who belonged to Glendale Beautiful for many years past, and a tree has purchased for her by, uh, the patrons group. Our birthday is March the 6th, I believe, and we are going to be planting or having a ceremony and, uh, giving out certificates to people who have had trees planted in the city. And I don't know whether we can ask for them to be planted in a, a certain place. Some people like them, you know, planted in a park near where the person lived or on the street or wherever, but at any way, they go forever. You know, a tree can live 100 years easily. Um, and the other thing I want to speak about is, um, this thing about the parolees being released. And, um, I tell you, ever since I first heard it a couple of years ago, or whenever it started, uh, it's really been a scary thing as far as I'm concerned, because I live down on Adams Hill. I see a lot of people coming and going. We have a lot of, uh, the density is a lot, uh, one of the highest densities in the nation in our area. And, uh, Don Meredith came and spoke. He's an ex-Glendale police officer and is involved with the parole program, I believe, the state program or whatever, county program, and he really gave us a very good insight. Anybody that wants to really get a close, uh, insight from someone who works with the people that are being released and so forth, he is a very good person to contact and have come to your group. And I'm telling you, neighborhood, we need to have neighborhood watch. And, you know, we have the police night out and, that we did, and how many people came out and joined in on it, and hopefully a lot of them formed neighborhood watches. Um, and as a matter of fact, the Clean and Beautiful, uh, Group Committee, we do encourage people to have neighborhood, uh, groups that go around, they walk their dogs and so forth together and talk about and keep an eye out and pick up trash as they walk around. So, I mean, it is a really wonderful idea to volunteer, to, um, get a friend or several friends and just walk the neighborhood, kind of keep an eye early morning. Some of them do it later in the evening with their dogs, and it really is a good way to have all those eyes watching to see what's happening. And, uh, I do think, uh, we should encourage that feeling of friendliness or, um, combat, you know, compatibility with each other and have a watch in the neighborhood, and it will help very much. So that's all I really feel, uh, I want to say, but I, I do feel very strongly about that, that we do need to have some, uh, groups join together. And I'm hoping maybe the homeowners groups this year will definitely set about having, uh, neighborhood watches in the neighborhood, in their areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie Hooker, to be followed by Mike Mohill.
Mayor, city councilman, my name is Charlie Hooker. I live in the Verdugo Woodlands. I believe last week the city council mentioned they were going to implement bike lanes throughout Glendale. One of the streets mentioned was Verdugo Road, which is the main artery to go to Montrose. And, uh, Montrose and where I live anyway, it's a very busy area, and I can't see how we can give up any of our traffic lanes to the bicyclists. I bike, I bike too, but not in Glendale because you'll get run over. But, uh, Verdugo Hills Hospital and all of this area, they need access, car access, ambulance access, fire access, police access, not to be choked off by a bicycle lane or something. Uh, to men, to implement bike lanes is a very dangerous idea, if not stupid. We had, uh, by my house, uh, I lost part of my roof and we lost a lots, a lot of our land up there, uh, due to a fire several years ago. And we needed every bit of fire equipment and everything to go along Verdugo Road, go up and back. They parked their truck up in back of my house on a fire trail. I'll give the Glendale Fire Department all it could do as I can, but we don't need to be having our fire lanes and everything choked off with bicycles. And, uh, the city council or whoever is trying to implement this, I hope that the people on television that are watching this and the people here in the city council will remember all of the different, uh, people that voted for, and I know Mr. Weaver didn't, but the other ones, I hope that they write down their names and when it comes time for election, we'll vote them out of office. The next thing I would like to see is, does Glendale collect, uh, bicycle license? They don't, there's no bicycle licenses, I don't think, on most of the bikes. How come we don't have bicycle, uh, license and people citing the bicycles for not having their license as well as for the dogs? We have lots of dogs all over Glendale, and this would be all revenue for the city of Glendale. This is something that we should, uh, jump on the bandwagon on. And, uh, somebody also mentioned last week that, uh, they saw in an article in some magazine or something in this area about the bicycles and how heavily they were used in World War II. But, folks, when World War II, the gas was really rationed. I mean, not like it is now, raising the price up, but I mean, you had to have just cause to get to work, to Lockheed, Boeing, or anyplace. And bicycling in this area, especially in Glendale with all the high, heavy traffic that we have, is going to put a lot of people, their life in danger. And I'll have to, our article that we have here with the City of Glendale Public Works, uh, I've tried to read through here, but yet it doesn't really define where the lanes are going to be, but, uh, I hope that, uh, we're going to try and leave the route from, at least from Glendale College up to Montrose alone and not try and crowd just a one-way up and a one-way down, uh, for Verdugo Road, because then everybody will be going over to Cunyatta, and they'll really hate, uh, that mess. But again, I want to say thank you to Dave Weaver for his one vote that was against the bicycle lanes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Mohill, and then my last card is Sharon Weissman.
Mayor Friedman, council members in the viewing audience, my name is Mike Mohill, longtime resident of Glendale. Mayor Friedman, for the past few weeks, I have addressed this council concerning campaign monies received by you, Councilman Najarian, Quintero, and John Draymond from the subcontractors of ADI. ADI Advanced Development and Investment Company is a public housing company that remains today under federal investigation. ADI built five projects in Glendale at a cost of more than $30 million. Mrs. Friedman, you maintain no knowledge of the concern, uh, excuse me, of the connection between the subcontractors of ADI and you receiving about $16,000 from these subcontractors? You asked both the city attorney and the city clerk whether the city keeps a list of contractors who do business with the city of Glendale. Mrs. Friedman, I never asked for a list. Wouldn't you know, Mrs. Friedman, the city clerk and the city attorney would not have a list or the knowledge, but the planning director would know of the subcontractors of ADI and other developers? Mrs. Friedman, wouldn't your campaign manager in 2009, Elaine Wilkinson, the former director of planning for the city of Glendale, have knowledge of all the major developers, contractors, and subcontractors of the city? Wouldn't Mrs. Wilkinson interact with ADI and other subcontractors? Ask any person in politics, the role of a good city, excuse me, good role, good campaign manager is to find the money for their candidates. Being a former city director, Mrs., wasn't Mrs. Wilkinson well-connected in order to ask people for money in your behalf? Mrs. Wilkinson today is on the board of directors of Habitat for Humanity, San Gabriel Valley Chapter, and helps in their, in their fundraising, a position requiring skill in asking people for money. Former councilman John Draymond received $9,000 from the subcontractors of ADI, plus an approximately $200,000 makeover on his condo. Isn't it ironic that the same subcontractors who contributed to Mr. Draymond's 2007 campaign also contributed to your 2009 campaign? Companies like National Fire and Service and Systems, Ivan Construction, and DNA Coding and Restoration. It has been reported that ADI subcontractors in 2009 donated $27,000 to Councilman Ara Najarian, $23,000 to Councilman Frank Quintero's campaign, and like you, they don't continue to claim no knowledge of the connection of ADI, using third parties to influence the outcome of city elections. According to a December 29, 2010 article in the Los Angeles Times, "Two years leading up to the 2009 election, nearly one in every $4 received by the top four candidates for the council, more than $100,000 in total came from the subcontractors, companies, and their employee relatives. Collectively, those donations outstripped any other known source in the race." As the mayor and the councilman, council member, you are responsible for the city's finances. From this diash, you have said your husband handles your financial matters in your family. Now you tell the public you did not have any knowledge as to why unknown companies and individuals would want to write checks worth thousands of dollars in campaign, in campaign contributions. Mayor Friedman, isn't it ironic that after the ADI scandal hits, hit the papers, this council decided on campaign reform like we did tonight after the fact, and the city is currently in an expensive lawsuit against ADI? We speak about the public trust, and we have four council members who want to claim no knowledge of pay-to-pay politics. Is there any reason why the public believes most politicians are mostly interested in their self-enrichment? Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill, longtime resident of Glendale. My name is Mike Mohill, longtime resident of Glendale.
Thank you. Sharon Weissman's my last card.
Mayor Friedman, councilmembers, staff, I'm Sharon Weissman from Far North Glendale, speaking as an individual. And for those who don't know about current city politics and might be inclined to listen to some of the comments here and come away with misinformation, I feel compelled to counteract some of what's recently been said. Already didn't, thank you, compelled to be honest. For example, Mike Mohill should be ashamed of himself maligning good people like the Wilkersons. There's nothing wrong with contributing to local campaigns. No credible person thinks there's anything wrong, anything in the least improper with what the Wilkersons did, supporting Mrs. Friedman's campaign. Reporting, repeating lies and innuendo does not make them true. I fear Mr. Mohill is really trying to chill public discourse and might cause some people to avoid the spotlight, avoid speaking out, by bullying those he disagrees with. And please, volunteers, don't stop helping with campaigns because Mr. Mohill and his cronies will attack you and discourage public service and helping the city. I want to thank the council for serving, all of you, even the ones I didn't vote for. It's very difficult to work with a city like this, particularly under consistent attack, repeated attacks that have been repeatedly shown to be not at all true, and yet they keep dredging up the same old stuff. I want to also thank all the hard-working city employees, and I want to especially thank Mrs. Wilkerson as an example of the retired city employees who continue to serve the city with their volunteer efforts. Habitat for Humanity is a wonderful way to help people find good, hard-working people that want a home, that help build their own. It's a wonderful thing. And also, when a retired city employee comes back, they don't have to keep helping the city. They're getting their pension, their well-deserved, well-earned pension that they contributed to for their working career. They don't deserve to be insulted by the likes of Mr. Mohill. Although, I do want to clarify, particularly for the news press, that I in no way am suggesting that Mr. Mohill and Barry Allen and that whole crew be kept from their First Amendment rights to speak. I do feel very strongly, however, that the way to counteract speech that is incorrect is with more speech, and that's why I'm here tonight, sharing my views in direct contradiction to what Mr. Mohill has been saying. And please, those of you who see, when you're out and about, and you see the good, decent people who serve this city, both by working for it with their paycheck, by standing for public office that now is not reimbursed anywhere near the amount of time you put in, and those retirees who continue to come say, you know, help with the city and do a lot of good things, please, stop them and let them know you appreciate them and you're not paying attention to the inappropriate attacks for the positive contributions that people make. Don't let this crew of naysayers keep the good people from helping Glendale as they've done all along. And again, thank you. And I'm really very sorry, I suspect praising Mrs. Wilkerson will only result in more vitriol from Van Guardians and Barry Allen, and I'm really sorry for that. She does not deserve that at all. So again, thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. That's my last card. Are there any comments from council?
I want to address the bulky item pickup. Ms. Hammond was not sure exactly what the telephone number was. Is it correct, 818-548-3916? Is that correct? I also have an old television. It's not old, it's a new TV, an LCD TV, that is not working, and I don't know how to get rid of it. It's too small for me to put it out on, is there a recycling center?
The e-waste program.
Where can I drop that off?
That's also a bulky item, or you can drop it off, yes, across the street from our Public Works Yard. You can also drop it off there, there's a recycling center.
It's not worth for me to call the bulky item pickups for, you know, small T.
Yeah, the convenience factor is there, just to do the drop-off across from the yard.
From the Public Works Yard?
Yes.
All right. So the bulky item pickup is 548-18548-3916. Thank you.
And it's free.
And it's free.
Mr. Najarian.
I probably shouldn't. Mr. Mohill is not wrong all the time. He was right last week when he came to support me in front of all of us at City Council. But last week, he did say that we do disagree on many items, and he was right about that also. The thing that the public needs to understand is that we took very bold and strong steps as a city council to completely revamp our campaign finance laws, our campaign contribution limits, our conflict of interest laws. This was not an easy process. This was a long and lengthy process that initially started with Mr. Garcia's predecessor, Scott Howard. We worked years on this, and we looked at model rules for conflict across the county, across the entire United States. And we took several very bold steps in that regard. I doubt that there are many other cities that have such conflict laws and campaign contribution limits, such as we do. There are others, but we're certainly near the top of the list. It's not something that happened overnight. This wasn't just a knee-jerk reaction that we decided to implement after the election or even, this predated the whole ADI issue by years. So to imply that the ADI issues arose, and we quickly got together and patched together this campaign contribution ordinance and this campaign conflict of interest ordinance is truly a false statement. We worked hard, every one of us on this council, to make this thing something that we could be workable, and you saw some of those efforts today as we tried to clean up the process, to make the information more available to our monitors, the city clerk's office, and the city attorney's office. So it's just wrong to imply that we put this together as a knee-jerk reaction. We have taken ethics and campaign contributions seriously on this council, and the ordinances that we have on the books now are a true reflection of that.
Anything else? Okay, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
You are adjourned.